I mean, that's what...
They gotta have a bar for those bridges.
Yes.
They gotta have a bar.
Yes.
And then they gotta close the road.
You're not unprotected. There are federal regulations in place that we have to abide by. We've got a lot of very extreme federal regulations.
Yeah, I see. We get everybody's attention. I think, let Robin, I like, I mean, I, I don't know what he was trying to say there.
I mean, you're not unprotected. There are a lot of federal regulations in place already through the federal FAA, through US Army Corps, US Mission Wildlife, ADOC's gotta say so, and as well. So, I mean, there are a lot of federal regulations already in place.
Well, look, there's like sixty-seven counties in the whole state. You're legally and legally that Cleveland County is the only one who saw this as a benefit?
That's me.
That what you don't think it is?
Yeah, there are many counties that aren't.
Well, obviously, they didn't...
Well, he didn't pass the House. I mean, there was a lot of objections.
But Cleveland County was the only one that said excluded. And we had that, we don't even have to tell our governor.
But they say they can't do anything now.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. In Texas, where they have all the wind, they've got mandates around ten tons of their power has to be wind, I believe, or red. Their productivity on that is about eight point seven percent. Other words, windmills will build for this capacity, but during the period, it's eight point seven percent of capacity. How much wind do we expect to make if we put it down in Alabama when Texas is only eight point seven percent?
Ask the question now.
Can I help with that?
Yes.
In Texas, there was such a boom because there wasn't a mandate per se. There was a free market system where, in Texas, you don't have down the power purchase agreement. You order to sell power, it goes into on the spot market. And so, back in the mid-two thousands, there was a big rush and a big boom in Texas to build wind. What it did was, it overtook the infrastructure. The infrastructure that was in place couldn't handle the amount of wind that was being produced, the amount of electricity. And so, because there was a lack of power lines, wind farms were being curtailed. One I built in Horse Hollow near Appleland, Texas. Horse Hollow was 737 megawatts. There was a period of time that our lid operated at fifty percent capacity because the transmission lines couldn't take it. Now, whose fault was that? Whoever manages the infrastructure system, the transmission line system there, didn't see all that coming at one time. The studies didn't show it. So, wind farms were being curtailed at fifty percent at one time. That's not opinion, that's fact. And so, that goes into that, it's only at such a percentage of what it could be, that goes into that. That's fact. Now, here in Alabama, I've seen a lot of stuff, old Enrail maps from 2008 to 2009, about what the wind is only capable of so much, and it's not commercially viable, because of these Enrail maps from 2009. Well, our turbine technology in 2014 is a lot better than it was in 2009. Lot better gearboxes, more efficient turbines, longer blades, more efficient blades. So, today, you can create commercial-grade wind power in Alabama where you couldn't on those old studies in 2009.
Yes, sir.
My question ties back to my question I had earlier. You're saying that we need to go to our commissioners and tell them that we want legislation when all of us as a whole were tempted for legislation without our commissioners even so much as asking?
Yeah. How many times you gonna throw me on that bus? Let me, I try to explain this. I went down, I guess it was back a couple months ago, when this all... No, no, are you gonna let me talk?
Obviously, I'm on my way.
Yeah, well, you, you, you keep interrupting.
Let's settle down, guys. Let's have respect. I had, I had disrespect for Mr. Owen while we had a question his ear, and this made me feel bad. Please ask him, I forgive him, Mr. Owen. It's all right, like, belts here. We see what the real cause of this whole thing is going to be, is trying to divide the community. This is not God's people. I know, I feel certain it's not right.
But on the God, we got the decision he wants.
That's exactly right, but this is dividing the community. This is dividing the community. Let's keep that in mind, Mr. Owen.
When I...
Let's settle down, please.
When I, when I went down a couple months ago, no one, as far as I knew, except for Mr. Wise on Turkey Heaven, had come out and said he was just strictly against it. I, I hadn't heard from this dogged, I hadn't heard from anybody that they were strictly against it. I went down for an opportunity, and I went down to ask. That's what I tried to explain. And, and I think we had the Chamber of Commerce had written a letter in favor because we're in favor of trying to bring jobs to Cleveland County. Please understand that. And so, did the City of Pepplin Mayor wrote a letter. And I think all the commission as a whole wanted their, you know, wanted to bring jobs to Cleveland County. Now, when we get down there, we ask what we can do, we're understanding we may have a chance that we could have industry or lose it completely. And we've had, we've missed some good things here. And we, you know, we licked our wounds and we tried to keep going. And so, yeah, we didn't, I didn't want to lose that opportunity. I think, Ms. Cobb, did you write a letter in favor of, at the time, on top? You didn't write a letter?
Wasn't that it was so time-sensitive? Is that really what it was? Was it that it was time-sensitive that you needed to get there?
Yeah. It, it happened. It come up, it come up on, it come up all of a sudden. And I, you know, and like I said, it's never been a secret. I've talked about it, talked about it on the radio several times. So, I didn't know that there was that much opposition. I thought that wind farms were a great thing. I still hope that they are a good thing. I still hope that they turn out to be a good thing, and they bring some jobs, and they bring some income. We have a Talladega National Forest, one-third, nearly one-third of our county's, Talladega National Forest. We get no taxes, but we get what's called PIL, Pay and Leave Taxes, because nobody lives up there. We get a hundred thousand for the county and a hundred thousand for the schools every year. And that hundred thousand can make it tough on our budget, and every year, we're in danger of losing that. If we lose that hundred thousand, we're gonna be in a tight county. Now, am I looking for something that would bring in two hundred thousand dollars to our county to make up in case we lose that PIL? Yes. So, I mean, somebody can beat me up if you want to, but I went down there, we're trying to help the county.
I was, I was trying to be, I was just trying to understand why the decision was made.
I, I was trying to explain, yeah. And that's why I went to do that. Now, since that time, this dogged came, and she had, she is my neighbor, and she has made it clear, and she's did her homework, and she's got it out. And the commission that night, after she came, I explained, do we still want this project? Now, we had to take a break. It was a done a secret when we, we took a break. We come back and I explained, do we want to keep doing this? Do we want to keep us exempted? And at the time, it had to be voted on just to be put on the agenda, had to be unanimous. It was made unanimous to put on the agenda. All four commissioners, I'm gonna give you the credit, you may not be, voted at that night that we wanted to be exempted from the bill. Since that time, Mr. Langley is, he's still on, on the line as far as on the note, on the vote, but he is saying that he has changed his mind, and I understand that, and I respect that, that's his right. But as far as it showing that four commissioners voted unanimously to be excluded from that bill, because he was looking for an opportunity for Cleveland County. But here we are. Like I said, it didn't make it through the House. There's a difference of opinion between me and Doug whether or not it would make it through the House with what Doug was saying or not. I don't think it would have made it through the House. I think there was too much controversy between other counties. It's my understanding that Jefferson County didn't like the bill, and Blount County didn't like the bill. So, that's where we're at. We got a year if you want to pressure or talk your commission into trying to get some legislation, some local legislation. That's our next step. I think all of us are planning on visiting some wind farms in the future. I've made some commitments to go visit some wind farms. And so, that's where we're at. Mr. White?
I have a question I wanted to ask him and Paul Owen, and I did, but, you know, those in Tennessee that you saw, I know some of the, within some of the regulations I saw that was, that was all the second of the, about the ridge lines, the brown line being more visible, and, and that is an issue in some communities, like it would be here. Those that you went to visit, were they on a ridge line or were they down?
Well, they were, they were actually about on top of the hill. They sat back probably, they were sort of closer, close together, and just spread out in just one area. Not like what I've seen on maps, where they're gonna be spread along the ridge line here. But that, but as soon as you step over, I'd say seventy-five, eighty feet, you'd be running into trees, that's how close seventy-five, eighty feet, you know, the small trees, and all that to the right, and then it just sort of went in just a path of turrets. But the videos that I made, I've got them here, I'd be glad to let you look at it, and you can just see firsthand what I, what I did. And, you know, I, I was really, you know, I was, I was going for a bigger, it was sound like, you know, that my wind was gonna blow out of my truck, and I got up there, and it was really, I'm like, and I'd like some of the gentlemen to come to my house, and we sat there and listened to it, and they were, couldn't bother to listen to it, and said, well, I'm talking, you know, and I'm, but, and I understand, you know, that the other turbines are gonna be tall. But the thing about this, let's think about the turbines that I were, that I went to look at, it was 290, that's to the top. Well, that turbine's closer to the ground. The other turbines are taller. This turbine, I was standing right under the turbine, and, and, and with the wind flowing by, my camera, if you don't listen to my camera, you're here, the wind was flowing by now, maybe nine knots at day eight, the second day, because there was a storm coming through, and no turbine, they were flexing, the blade was flexing back.
How far away were you able to see them when you were approaching the site?
When I turned, and you'll see on my, and I said, the first day I went up, it was real high. And, and, and sort of, I come around the ridge, I could see the top of, now, when you're coming through Oak Ridge, coming into the town, there's a ridge there, you're coming down that small interstate, or a small road off of Miami Interstate, so you can look over to the ridge, and you can see the turbine way over. When I first went up there, I Googled it, and if you're looking from up beside, looking straight down, all you can see is just the, the gravel rubbing one out to it, because from the, from the overhead, you can't really see the turbine. And like I said, I got what I've got right here, you know, just a visual of it, that you, you weren't gonna get my, I had, I joke with it on Facebook, but it's five minutes long, and I couldn't get it to, I was gonna try to email it to people, and I couldn't do that, so I just put it on my main computer, and had to take, you know, the ones on my phone, I went out the router, just, you know, let's take it to see it. And I had one, I had a few pictures there. But, you know, I got all of them, kind of the turbines, all of them, you know, the ones I was explaining are totally different than the ones that I painted in ten six. So, they're much better than the ones over there. The ones I've seen there.
The thing is, we, we do need to look more, we need to educate our people. We're learning about them every day until this was talked forward. I need nothing about this, except for what I'm saying now, Phil. I have been getting misinformation. That's our job, to get misinformation, and to make a good decision, what we've done about it. But we still have a lot of information to gather, and I think everybody needs to be educated about it. And the more that y'all know, and the more we know, the more we can find out, the more we can give you information. But we're all vulnerable about these things.
Ms. Owen?
Um, first, if you don't mind me, I'm Tina below me. I am the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce in Cleveland County. And just so you know, as far as how fast this was moving, I wrote the letter the morning I had my, my baby six weeks ago. And I sent an email to my board that day, went in and had a C-section. I think I got my final majority approval after I had my baby, and pulled my computer out and sent the letter. That's how fast it, it's moving. And economic development deals, y'all know, y'all are business people, they move so fast. I mean, the Remington deal, it just happened, there was three people in this state that knew about it for the past few years. And you just, you, I, I am all for educating, and we've got that past ahead of us to educate. From a Chamber of Commerce perspective, Ryan doesn't need to take offense on this. We are, we are, it's our job to look for economic development opportunities in Cleveland County, and we are a membership organization, and that's, that's what we're there to, we're there to do. And we saw this as an opportunity of bringing, you know, tax dollars into our county that could potentially go, put forward more opportunities, and look for more economic development opportunities for our county. And from our perspective, that's why, we're not saying we're for it or we're against it, but the way the bill was written, we felt like it eliminated it as a, as an opportunity altogether. So, that's why we supported at least eliminating, at least carving out Cleveland County, so that we could go forward and continue to look at it. We knew that the deal's not done, they got a fine fire. You know, they still got, they still have to dig.
Y'all were the ones who said Ryan?
No. I don't have anything to do with what Ryan does. I don't, I don't have anything to do with what Ryan does. As a Chamber of Commerce, we wrote a letter in support of the amendment that carved out Cleveland County, just so we could continue to go down the road and sit.
It's not going to be shut for everything.
Exactly. And that's what, that's what the amendment was about.
Hold on, then, I was at Avenue Fifty. That Avenue Fifty, we're putting here just like the yard right, because like, it might be, it's, it's right there.
Actually, the twenty-five hundred feet was not there. I mean, that's not...
Even though a thousand feet, that ain't there.
But, but it moved, it was moving so fast that we had to step up and see, step forward. And as far as Cleveland County, I know you said, well, I was Cleveland County, the only one that saw this, well, I think that's pretty darn good. Cleveland County was ahead of the game, and in the ballgame, saying, wait a second, let's get more educated on this.
But just for me, I love the commissioner. When you work that, and I, we need nothing until it was, I mean, y'all honestly felt like it was too late.
I understand.
So, when we contacted Richard Lindsay, you know what he said? Tell your leader, which I'm assuming was Ryan and whoever went to the county, because that's the only ones that had contacted, your leader said this is what your county wanted. Well, when we said, when I said, I don't wanna speak to me, but when I said that, who was the leader? Because, I mean, there's four commissioners, and from my understanding, none of them foreknew about it, that he was going down there, and that it just feels like it's being pressed on us and slapped in our face, and nobody had any, I mean, nobody knows.
And I, I tried to explain that, that I didn't go down to try to get, I went down and say...
But because of your position, you're considered a Cleveland County leader, and so that's how I got put out there. So, everybody's getting bashed here.
I, I know it's getting bashed, but when we come back...
My phone has rang three hundred times in the last five.
But when we come back here, the four voted, you have the streets, keep us exempt. I mean, so, even if, but I, but you still had that opportunity.
I think we're at a favorite point that you have, I think, let's take it big here. I mean, we're, we're in the situation we're in, we've got a dinner, so let's try to move forward, Phil. Let's not hold any blame anymore on anybody. We've got to move forward where we're at. Out of respect for everybody in this room, we've got to move forward. Just as firm as you were to move forward, Phil.
And I would, if you had a business opportunity, I'd try to help you too, because, and I, and I told Anthony, I went down there and tried to do what I thought was best for the county. And I, I'm guilty of that. And I went back up, I'll be a man, and I'll take it, I'll have to take it and live with it the rest of my life. But I'm only looking after, you know, what I think the taxpayers asking to do, is try to bring income in. So, yes, ma'am?
I just, I have a call, you know, Mr. Sias, you had a picture of him, and the last word, the first word of that, and the last one's a very close one. And that's what I'm...
I understand. If, like I said, if everybody will take the time, let your commissioner know how you feel. If the commission comes back as a whole, makes some sort of decision to vote on something, then the commission has the power, three, three to two, or two to one, or whatever, to try and get the legislators to pass it. But that's what we'll have to do in the next year. But as of right now, there's, yes, ma'am?
I have one question. In the long run, if these things get built, how many jobs are gonna be out for somebody that wields in this county, that didn't have to be employed from none of that ground station, or from the company itself? That's what I want to know. I understand the tax dollar thing, but as far as, if you die a hole to, to, to say this is a great thing, to help the economy of the county, but it doesn't actually help the people of the county with jobs, if there's none, when it's all finished? So, how many jobs is this thing going to create?
How many, now, this take, you know, I was working for, he is...
Dirt, dirt construction, two hundred, two hundred fifty timber jobs, construction six to nine miles. And then after that, permanent jobs for this size of wind farm, eight to ten jobs. You'll, you'll have, you'll have a plant manager, now, unless someone in the county's qualified to do that, and that probably got it outside. You'll either have one or two office assistants, then you'll have some high voltage, normal electric, top guys that are trained, high voltage, a substation guy, and then your wind technicians, inclining towers, doing preventative maintenance, things like that. Ms. Owen, how many did you say were from that area who actually worked on the wind farm?
All the people that I met that was up there, lived within five, seven miles of the wind farm, and all of them worked there.
And they have been there about the whole, that's where they grew up?
Yeah. The, the people I've met, Jose was one of them, and I met a victim where I was staying at, at Doubletree. When I come out, I think that morning, I was calling Carl to go up and meet with him that day, and he said, well, just, you know, about nine o'clock, it'll be fine. And she said, we went up to the wind, windmills, and I said, yeah. And she said, well, her best friend, her fiance's best friend worked up there. So, I, and it was amazing to be able to meet somebody just off the spur of the moment on my way up there. And I, and I said, well, how do you feel about it? I said, I'm just down here to visit, or up here for this. And, and she just kept on, you know, out, but she felt good about it. And this is just something, just a, she was about twenty-eight, twenty-nine years old. When I got up there, to talk over there, he, he's been working, he's the lowest seniority person there, and I think he said he'd been there about five to six years, four years. The other one that manages the building, had been there eight years. So, the lowest man on the podium, from what I talked to, was about four to six years as far as the time period they've been working there. And, and what he talked, you know, and I, and I sort of made him mad, made him cause the questions I was asking, because I was asking the questions the job was asking me. And these guys that worked on these turbines, these guys are staff. I mean, you just have to look at them, because they were up and down this turbine all the time. And, and, and they're just like us, you know, I mean, just, just the local people there in that town. But, you know, the question I was asking about the bottom line, you know, the jobs and stuff like that, and one of the things they said was, that in our, you know, because the operational manager called, asking how many turbines are they thinking? And I said, well, I don't really probably know, because I was thinking, my number's twenty-six. So, he said that it'd take about eight to ten people to run that type of turbine, especially when I started telling them how much taller the turbine was.
Well, that doesn't sound like a waste of a beautiful mountaintop for, you know, eight to ten jobs, if you ask me. I mean, I know it's Mr. Kitchen's property, he did it so far, and then he can do what he wants to do with it, and I wish him luck with it, but I wouldn't do it for nothing. I don't like them, don't want to see them. I don't think anybody that flies airplanes, they have a lot of friends that fly, I wouldn't fly over handling things either, and on top of the St. John's. I know they're supposed to have lights on them, and that sort of thing, but incoming weather there might not be usable, and there may be some accidents to an aircraft, you know, if they got that boat. And, and, you know, like I said, not only the bat, but the, you know, bats, bats will be attracted by the sound, everybody knows that bats eat their weight every night in the mosquitoes. If you just wait for the bats in there, and whether the mosquitoes toast you off, and there're gonna be big helicopters coming to get you, if you don't, you know, I mean, I don't like it.
I understand. And, and point taken, we understand why.
I don't think, I don't think that there's enough jobs gonna be created to warrant putting them up there.
Tell, tell somebody to come out, because I've been there.
Look, I don't have one.
I don't have one, really.
I don't think...
The one landowner involved?
Oh, it's my understanding, I think, the Coe Brothers, Johnny and Scotty, maybe, is that, maybe part of it, I don't know.
Potentially, and Headwaters, that's what we...
Headwaters Investments.
So, Mr. Kitchens and the Coe fields are the only two landowners that are speaking with the, um, the, the company?
There's a, a company called Headwaters.
The Casey.
Oh, the Casey's?
Casey, the Casey. So, we're talking about four landowners that's...
Well, potentially more, again, it depends on how much power is still, it's gonna be taken, how many turbines.
I don't, yeah, I'm really not clear on the road. How many can you tell, how many can you put up there and the roads stay up?
I don't know what I'm talking about, Judge Rockton, I'm, I'm sorry.
I think that's a statement, right now, we don't know who that, who that is the best location.
Can I ask a quick question about?
Yes.
We've heard from like a tremendous amount of people over the past two weeks, and we know there's a lot of people, I mean, obviously, this is a extraordinary turnout today. And based on the theme coming from the majority of people that are here, as far as concerned, we know there's a lot of people that would like to be here today that can't be here because of work or other commitments. If we hadn't have shown up today, would, would this situation been a topic of discussion for the, for the, for the commission?
If, if, if no one showed up today, then the commission would probably not seek any legislative measure.
No, I mean, would it have, would it even come up today?
No, most likely not, because if, as it is right now, it is something that we don't have control of, we're not zoning.
So, based on the response, since this has gone down, does this not merit a genuine public hearing at a time when more people can show up and more people can voice their concern?
I think, I think the commission would probably take that into consideration.
I think that would be a great idea.
I think we'll probably take that into consideration. But I can't, I can't speak for them, I think everybody needs a chance to digest it.
No, I'm asking everybody, because...
I beg to differ, because I think Ryan was speaking for the commission as a whole. I didn't come, I brought my father with me today, and I did come today to talk to the commission about some questions that I had. And I'd also talked with Robbie on the phone on some more questions I had. You know, there's a lot of questions, as far as us setting idle, I haven't set idle in two weeks on this thing. And just trying to educate the people, educate myself, and, you know, work on it, and, and, you know, it's...
So, if, if there was a, a public hearing or a town hall meeting, would you guys be willing to, to come and meet with more of the public to where they could voice their concerns?
I'm always willing to listen to people, and I'm like, Ms. Owens, I have been digging information since I could, since this has came about. The better I'm educated on it, the better the decision I can make. But that's what we, I don't feel like any of us was sitting by like this, Don, we have been looking into it, looking and gathering information.
And we appreciate that.
I, I guess where we're coming from, the concern is, is that Ryan's saying that there's nothing we can do now, but based on the decision of the commission, um...
We're in a decision.
We're, as, to quote Ryan, we're wide open for a year, and nothing can be done.
As far as legal, our attorney's not here, so I can't answer that for our legal obligations is. That's why we have a county attorney. Those are questions that we need to ask him.
That's good. That's good.
One of the things is, is we talk about people for us, I, you know, if I, you're welcome to come to my house with the sheriff or the chief police if I'm breaking the law. Unless Mr. Kitchen invites me to his house, people never have, unless I invite myself, people won't have to worry about me coming interfering with he's doing on his property. Now, that county road, the commission does have a special order, and I have made clear with him now, that if there's any decision, if anybody on that county road, everybody know if there's any decision. That, and it's like, I don't know where they are as far as putting this stuff together. I've got, and like I said, I know Ryan said we didn't have questions today, but I was, I had a topic today, and it's the topic that y'all talking about today. And, and I want to find out exactly, you know, not on just the best judgment, what we're gonna make, if the turbine, if the turbines ever even go up. And, but, but I think we're a long ways from there, but I'm gonna continue to try to make my best guess on it, and then educate myself on it.
Yes, sir.
On getting the power away from the mountain, is it gonna be like some big four forty line, power lines, something like this, that one is, break it up?
Just, we'd like to use what's existing and not have to build additional transmission lines. Now, the actual, the thirty, forty turbines, connecting all them together in the one central location, all that's underground. Then where that comes into the substation, then it'll take it above ground, and we'd like to use the existing right away, sorry, there.
I have one more question. Mr. Tyus, how much blasting will be required, do you think, in putting these in on the mountain? And the reason I ask that question is about ten years ago, there was an earthquake in Fort Pan, and it cracked the foundation of a friend of ours' house in the Lake to Community. So with the rock base and all that we have on the farm, what are the, how much blasting, and what are the chances of our homes being damaged by the blasting for those of us that are close to it?
Two-part question. First, how much blasting? I don't know, I'm not the engineer who does that stuff. But I know, I've seen some of the blasting, and Sean Roberts, who I work for, I know, he's done that in some places, where they've had to do some of the blasting. It's extremely local laws, small charges, a lot of science goes into it, it's extremely local, and there won't be any houses harmed, foundations, etc.
Yes, sir. If, um, listening to all of the concern everyone I've talked, okay? Right now would be a terrible time to come to this county and buy a piece of my house in this county, because I think all the neighbors would say, stay away, stay away from here, sir. Immediately, immediately, and there's people that obviously just picked it, you would be very proud of having someone come here, so it's not everyone, I'm just spoke there, but a lot of people I've spoke to would be very negative. That's has to be a similar reaction to other places that put these up. Is there, is there anybody known by chance who don't know the answer, how long will that last before those people start giving positive feedback?
I, I watched a video yesterday, the mayor of, uh, Weatherford, Oklahoma, Dave Brown, I think is the name, provided just in this camper, invited him calling, gave him a call to listen to a lot of the video. It was on the news that he said, I think their, their wind farm's about eight years old, he says they've seen an economic boom, he said that in the last two years, new houses being built, property values going up. That wind farm's three miles from the city limits.
But then when I talked to this forum, he told me that due to them not having taxes in the town, they are for plenty. So, there are both sides, it's linked, he shouldn't throw away, you know, but, you know, it's still a link, you know?
Well, it's six o'clock, six eleven, I'm supposed to go sing in a revival at, at seven, and I'm hoping I can save some voters in there. Maybe working on my next career.